Let's get this show on the road. We'll call a works order, work section two order. First on the agenda is a public works report by Forrest, Albert, Stacy, and Ken. You're up, Forrest.
All right, thank you Mayor. So we had a pre-construction meeting with the street contractor on Friday afternoon. Got a lot of information from the contractor in Rose. Contractor.
Well, we prepare and we don't have to write paper.
Sugar Treat was just found out about three o'clock this afternoon.
That's the important part of your agenda. So, Ben Kaye and Logan and the contractor looked around the city streets on Friday afternoon, and there are some areas that need to have some patching, patchwork done before they do the milling overlay. They're looking to mill on tomorrow. They'll be here in the morning. They're gonna mill every street in town. They're gonna start, well, not in town, in this part of town, Dorfville here. They're gonna start on the west side and work their way east. So they're gonna start over on Third, at Third, and work towards Fifth. So they'll do Third and the 141st Place, they'll do that first. Work their way east. They think they'll get it completely done in one day, on Tuesday. So they'll open the streets back up to traffic. Streets will, while they're milling, I mean, you can drive on the milled streets, that's okay. Be a little rough, so slow down. And then they'll be done on Tuesday. They will not be here Wednesday, Thursday. The paving machine is gonna show up Friday, and they're gonna put the asphalt down again going west to east. But they're gonna get half of it done on Friday, and they're gonna get the rest of it done on Monday. So residents will need to stay off the streets while they're paving that day, but that next morning, so they pave on Friday, Saturday morning, you can get on it. pave on Monday, you can get on it Tuesday morning.
Is this kind of point four?
It's correct. Correct, yes. Yep.
We need to put that in our website so people have somewhere to go to find all that information. I've had a lot of people calling me, asking me already, and I had no information to give them. Where are they starting? Where are they? When's it gonna be done?
Is it their responsibility to protect their street?
Yes. Yep, they're gonna have traffic barriers up. They put, everybody should have gotten a hanger today notifying about it.
Yeah, mine was blown in the yard. I picked it up.
All right.
So, critical you get it on the website because if it happened to me, it'd probably happen to some other people that are in more direct line than I was, so.
So, is the flyer specific?
No, it is not. It just says they'll be here on this date, and that they'll start in the morning. And it didn't say anything about what you've said, that we're getting a partial this time, and then a deal, and then carrying it into a following week. We've been living in a construction zone for two and a half months now.
Yeah.
Yeah, people are getting a little...
Cranky?
Yeah, they are.
So, yeah, I think that'd be great, put that on the website or Facebook, or, you know, however you can reach the...
Well, when they call, I can, it's all there, 'cause I can't keep all that stuff straight. We had a guy die out at Microsoft today, so. He had a hard flash go on, and they cleared out the buildings at 1:30. But not us, we had to stay and get the doors fast. So, yeah, it's a big deal.
On the bright side, by next week, nobody will be in a construction zone no longer, and they'll have everything done.
So, and we're also deleting Fourth on the east side of the school. So we had that in the project. It's pretty new, should not be redone, so we took that out. So what this is, is a change order to do that patching, that patchwork. Everybody get this?
Yes.
Okay.
Change order number one.
Do the patchwork and then delete the stuff on Fourth, south of... So the add is about seventy-one hundred dollars. We cannot do the patchwork, but I think, looking at it, walking around the streets with Inroads and Logan, you know, and a lot of it didn't show up until we saw, you know, the work, what that was done by Jeff Dren. You know, they kind of exposed our soft spots that we had out there. And these are the soft spots that we found. And the price of sixty-seven dollars a square yard is a really good price for patching. What they're gonna do is they're going to, areas that need patching, they're going to take out six inches, and they're gonna put four inches of hot mix in, and then there'll be the two inches on top of everything, all the surfacing. So it'll be a total of six-inch-thick patch.
A lot of these areas that we're seeing, a lot of these areas we're seeing are near where our culverts were replaced. We knew we had issues there. The road was sinking into the culvert, the previous culverts, where cars turned around the corners. So it's, in my opinion, a necessity that we make sure that we don't be in the same situation five years after we spent all this money to hit the roads and everything looking at it.
It would seem odd to not fix it properly.
And Inroads will do the patching tomorrow. They will do the patching as part of the milling.
Very good. Any questions, John?
So we can't approve this change order tonight, or we can acknowledge that?
Answer questions.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for a general consensus that's okay for them to move forward with this, 'cause they wanna do this work yet this week. You know, they don't wanna wait two weeks, three weeks for your regular counseling.
We need to make a motion?
No, you can't tonight.
Okay, just affirmative and a nod, a yes, I think. I'm okay. Chopper? There's good, and Scott, you did, Scott's good. Okay, got it.
So I'll let the contractor proceed, and then this'll be whenever you have your next counseling. November eighteenth, I'm gonna have a chance.
Does someone from the city, or do you need to just kind of send an email or something?
Yeah, I will do that. And we, Logan will be out here, but we also have a guy out here. 'Cause there's a lot going on with the milling overlay, and we'll have another guy out here, too.
With the other day that we can't approve it till next, and then we can't approve any dollars until probably the patchwork's done.
That'll be by our next round of meeting, that'll be done.
So, as far as the, have any idea as far as the bid that we took for the entire project? We had like a contingency in there, and you know where we're at, or where we're at, all those numbers?
I do not, Mayor. I mean, I will split that put together.
So we know at the end what...
Yeah, where we're at.
Where we're at, and what, I think we have to plan it up from the bank, the bank and all that kind of stuff, so.
Okay. We had, we received good bids, we had some change orders, but we had a contingency in there. Mayor, I'll have to get all that. I will get that put together for your November meeting.
Okay, very good. Very good. I just, you know, drove around and looked at what Jeff Dren did. He did a really nice job.
Does that mean they're done now, Jeff Dren?
There's some punchless things that I'm gonna be working on with them. Things I'd like to see a little bit extra put into, but other than that, yeah, we've got all of our stuff. Where we need...
The dishes are slicked up pretty good. There's a little bit of raking, but you know, grass, we're gonna have to shoot whatever that stuff is, grass on, everything.
Yeah, and...
We already have...
Inroads is doing that as part of their stadium, yes.
It looks to me like where Floyd used to live, the two inlets that are over there, they might be higher than the basement of her yard, the intakes. And I don't know how you make water run uphill, but...
I can address that.
Yeah, something needs to shoot it.
We did shoot it, and they are, they are...
The exact same, they're higher, just by, and there's several of them up and down there that the, the intakes, they all hold water. I looked in every one of them, they all hold water. The other day when it rained, every one you looked in, there's a puddle of water in the bottom. So we basically took, taken the mosquito problem that was up above and put it down below. But there's several intakes that don't fall in the toe and the hill. So here's your toe, here's your hill, and your water runs here. They are up over here on the side. I don't know how you're gonna make water flow into them, but it needs to be addressed. Either you need to grade the toe and hill, put it where the waters, where the intakes are, but it's not gonna carry water. You need to, oh, you need to go look at this. It's, there's a lot of things that just aren't...
Some of them are manholes with an intake lid.
Yeah, yeah.
There are some of those.
No, they're on each end where they need to be, but they're so close to the road that they sit on the, on the bank, not in the toe and the hill where the water flows.
So Perry, if you have those, if you could get those to Logan, and then I'll look at those with Logan.
Well, I can tell him, go look.
But I don't know the residents you're talking about.
Yeah, well, it's down Fourth Street, 141st Place. And then that deal in front of Kathy's with the chute, where there should be an intake, that's just an accident waiting to happen for... That should have the intake like all the others instead of a chute that goes on the end of a galvanized pipe.
Forrest, he's talking about the Florida intersection with the Castee.
Yeah, that needs to have an intake, that's just, that's...
So Perry, we'll take a look at all those? I mean, well, we, they're not done, we need to do a walkthrough of everything, and...
So, there was a, I've been watching the stakes, so I put pipe in. And when you set your pipe, you set your pipe in the hole, and then you set your intake in. So he's been out there cutting all these pipes down, the intake pipes, six, eight, two, four. I looked in the back of his truck, he had six or eight of them back there. So when he cuts them intake tops off, 'cause he shot it all in, 'cause I lived down that road, and I'm watching what's going on. When he cuts that off, does that mean that we don't have the proper coverage of the minimum for the pipe to have, to have the warranty on the pipe? So if he cut ten inches off of that, does that mean we took ten inches of overfill?
No. No.
So what is the minimum overfill, or...
Over a, over a pipe?
Yeah, the pipe that we installed.
Yeah, the, the six inches?
Is minimum.
Yeah, now under a road, it's more, but for a long motorway, we're...
Well, no, we got, we got Septic here, so we might have a sixteen-ton truck back there to set the Septic back in there, and they'll drive over that, that pipe, so. I guess what I'm asking for, can you give me the schematics of what the warranty and the minimum backfill on the pipe that we installed? So then I can check it out. 'Cause it's easy to do. All you gotta do is put your tape measure down there, and stick it to the bottom of the pipe, subtract the depth of the pipe, the circumference, and then you'll have the fill, 'cause you just measured up to the top of that. So it's an easy process if we have the information.
I can get you the minimum cover over, over the different, we've got a couple different pipe materials, but over each of the pipe, I'll only give you the...
Well, it's all that, that green stuff that I'm looking at, so.
They're all, they're, what you're looking at is the nioplast structures. They're all gonna be green, but the pipe that connects to them is gonna be, we had, you know, an ADS, like an N-12.
Well, I'll draw a map and get my numbers, and we can go from there.
Yeah, so we got, we've got some concrete pipe, we've got some ADS, N-12, which is corrugated black plastic, and then we've got some water meat pipe.
Yeah, what did you put underneath the roads?
Concrete.
And slipped it in, or you removed all the old concrete, okay?
The new pipe under the roads is all concrete.
Okay.
And that was actually, the grade was actually dropped, that's why we had to do some exhumation.
Yeah, well, that's another thing, at Kathy's, it comes out, they dug down and kind of scooped it, but all that comes up and then shifts back towards the old mayor's house, behind that garage on the west side. That, that's, that's...
We've shot all these...
That's a nightmare waiting to happen. We'll be getting a call from, from the mayor when, if we get a big rain and all that runs back into his, his yard. So it's gonna come out that pipe, go this way, like this, to get back, and then go by who's on the council. No...
John Hathaway.
John Hathaway's property. So it's, it's a potential. You all need to go down and look, I'm telling you, you need to go look, see what I'm seeing.
Of course, if we can get together, I will get some information from...
I'm assuming you know the residents of Perry's house.
I know, I know all my names, so yeah, I will, we can, we can go through, and if there's any questions, we can...
Because I'm being nice, what they've said to me isn't so nice, so.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I talked to a couple of residents, and they're in their yards, and they're extremely happy with what it looks.
They don't know pipe.
Well, you know, they're...
And then there's some that look real nice now. Up by Sherry's Place, all that stuff plays nice. It's in the toe and the hill, looks like it's all gonna flow, but then you get down to the end of 141st Place or Avenue, whatever that is, that's where it starts getting janky and it's just not laying right. It's not in the toe and the hill, it's not down where the water's gonna flow, it's on the bank, and it's a... Potential problems, and if we can address it now, instead of somebody there yelling at us, I'd just as soon do it now.
Okay. Couple of things that I think Forrest pretty much took care of the storm guard improvements and road overlay. Did you find some issues with the water system? Maybe making some repairs on that. Then Mayor Cramay asked me to put the speed bump information and what we do away street information back into this, out of current project, it's just kind of information for you. And I suppose I'll let Bob discuss that. I just wanted to touch briefly on the traffic data first. That was another item that he asked me to put on here. I think going through, if I could reference, let's say 142nd Avenue, we, we had out of 109,000 vehicles counted, this is a year, year range, over the last year, we only had about 6,000 vehicles or so doing the speed limit. Everybody else was either five or more above. Seems our, our main portion is about 10 above, we had about 31,000 at 10 above, 27,000 at 10 to 15 above, so. We are collecting quite a bit of good data off of this stuff. I don't know if this is something that we can pitch to the county, if we could even use this. I guess that might be the question for us, but Mayor asked me to get this put on here. I can break it down even further, if any of you guys want. I can do hourly, I can do 15 minutes, I can do pretty much anything you want with these. If you wanna see the data, but right now that's a year count.
Well, this would be good data for when, if they do data, and they do it during non-school times and periods, we'll have that data, where we can go, yeah, we did it all these days when there's no traffic in town. We have data from our speed signs that contradict everything you're saying. So that's a good deal, yeah.
Well, and the reason I asked him to put this back on is, well, number one, you know, once you guys are all working during the day, I'm just an old retired guy, I'm home most always, all day long. And when school kids are picked up, and when they get dropped off, and kids getting out at noon time, we've got the cross-dentary kids that are running around the streets, running down across in front of my house, and around in the drive, and, you know, and amongst their friends who are getting out of school, which, you know, it only takes one, one accident. But I, I'm really concerned with, with, you know, the speed that we see here. And, you know, I noticed, I know, I put my trailer out there, and I parked my car out there in front of my house, and kind of acts as a speed bump.
Well, if you're sitting on that street, it's absolutely...
I'm not here to argue with you, okay? You know, I'm just, I got the table, okay? I'm just, you can, you can talk for your, after I get done, but I, I just want, you know, people, the people that I've talked to individually about this, two gentlemen I talked to up town, they were all for the speed bumps. They're concerned about the speeding. I know the people on 134th Avenue are concerned about the speeding, the narrowness of the road, the buses, all of those kinds of things. And I think that it's important, you know, public safety is, is important. And our, yes, they're guarding the school hours. Yeah, well, I'm just telling you that...
You can tell them enough.
You slow down, you know, you slow people down. And you can see here that they really buck down the street. There's a young man in a red pickup that I know, he's hitting forty, fifty mile an hour. And the one thing that bothers me is, is the forty years that I've lived in Almond, I have yet to see a Polk County Sheriff's deputy running radar on 134th Avenue. They're usually on 136th or 142nd Place, but yet have I seen him ever run on 134th Avenue? And I don't know if any of you have ever seen him run radar on 134th Avenue.
Actually, I have.
Well, I have not, and I just...
Why don't you ask him?
Tell him, he cares. Well, I'm gonna ask him that, very question, you know, and request that that happened. But I just want, you know, you guys to know that this is something I, it's dear, dear to me, that I don't wanna see somebody get hit, or get hurt, or get run off the road, or the mailboxes get taken out, and that seems to happen every once in a while, especially when the people come around a corner, they're going...
We're hearing they're dying to take a mailbox out by accident.
Well, you know, it's just one of those things that...
It's important to do, to the government.
So I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much designed to the fact that, you know, nobody here at this table is interested in addressing any of that issue, unless you wanna speak up.
The speed bumps? We did want them removed when, when they got removed down up here where we were at. Nobody even knew it was gonna happen, and next week came home and they were gone. They should still be there as far as I'm concerned, but the ones back that were there, and...
Who decided to remove them?
I think the mayor did, 'cause they wanted, they removed the two down here. Nobody else can make that call. Nobody else can make that call.
I didn't do that myself.
Nobody else can make that call but you.
It was the council. The council had to make that call.
No, we did not. We did not make that call. We said we'd remove the two down here.
It was a long time ago, I...
I remember, 'cause I was mad when I came home that day, and they were gone, 'cause that was a deterrent to keep big trucks. The school buses didn't like them, they didn't come down the street. You removed them, and you opened up the gateway to...
So you're, you're in favor of speed bumps on...
Yeah, I am.
Third Street, Fourth?
Third, Fourth.
Nobody else is a favor?
I'm pretty sure most everybody else is, too.
Nobody else is in favor of speed bumps?
Speed bumps, whatever, or, or you're...
Tables or whatever.
Humps. He homes.
I could see them down in your area, but we have such, we have one block, and we just had the little, whatever they were down, and...
Speed hall?
Yeah, yeah.
Hall, yeah, speed hall.
Yeah, and you, you guys got a longer run to get, get the F, but we, we put the bump...
They don't need a long run, because they turn off that highway at Florida, and they're doing forty before they hit that stop sign, and that's a block, that's a block.
Well, if you get them in your halfway.
Well, we'll have more information when the new signs, the new speed sign, we got two coming. And we're here on the east, you know, in both ways. But, so you're in the affirmative morning, affirmative?
I'd like to see speed bumps, I'd like to help there.
Scott, look, Scott, look, the bump is not in there, it's speed bump.
Really, you're not?
Not. So we got, we got three S's and two no's.
Okay. Well, I think there needs to be a little discussion on the type there. The reason I give this information is specifically because they're all, each one is designed to do a different thing.
Well, we also...
Well, the first two won't work on our street, if that's what, if that's what's gonna happen.
Right. Because we have the speed bump for, all it does is for it to go faster for less of a bump. This here ain't gonna slow them down, we're gonna have to have a table.
Well, that's fine, no.
That's what I'm saying, but we're gonna have these two on 134th, are they gonna do big?
Whatever the most effective one is.
I'm for that one. What, Forrest, what, what do you think?
This...
It ain't his opinion, it's our opinion.
Yeah, really is...
Yeah, it has nothing to do with it.
Really is up to the residents on, on what they want to see. As far as the types, if you do wanna do something, the, the humps are, I think, better than the bumps, just because bumps, if you hit those too fast, you can do damage to a car, or a person, to anything, or a bump is a little more gradual going over, but that's, that is really...
Also, are there any thoughts on the morning, no right-hand turn on Third, Fourth, from seven, or six in the morning till eight? And no left-hand turn on Third, Fourth, or Fifth, Sixth in the, in the afternoon?
I, I think it's a, for two signs and not a very big investment, we could try it, and if it works, it works, and if not, we can, we can...
Well, we kinda got them trained now, sort of, because of construction. And now we kinda got them going in that direction, going to the sixth street down 141st Place.
'Cause we're all going out of town in the morning, so it shouldn't affect residents too bad. And, and we're all coming home, so I don't think it's gonna be that much of a life change for the residents in town. It's gonna direct traffic down the school streets that we want them to travel, so.
Can we back up just a second? I'm very curious as to why you guys don't want the humps, bumps, or taking...
Because the ones we had before didn't do no good, just made them go faster. They didn't do a damn bit of good down there.
You guys can test it for something else.
Tables?
I'm sure they will, I'm sure they will.
Walts might, yeah, and somebody will get hurt, and that's what we're trying to avoid, you know?
Yeah.
My, my people say that every time you put something in there, now, now they speed from stop sign to stop sign, speed up, slow down, they're...
Now they're speed bumps, speed bumps.
Doesn't think they're bumping that.
They have before, they, it'd be exactly the same thing they're doing.
There is absolutely zero slowing down now.
All this will do is lock the blood off the cars for them.
Do you have another thought?
No.
You have another thought?
No, I don't.
Ready to suggest something?
So, so, but if you wanna spend ten to twelve thousand dollars, these are what, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars apiece? You guys want probably three or four on our street and four or five uptown? Sure, you're gonna spend twelve thousand dollars on this?
And what's, what's.
The bumps don't work very.
And they do down our street, it slows them down. It makes the big trucks, the dirt trucks, the school buses, cause when they hit that and that bus goes like that.
They shouldn't be going down that anyways, because we have already listed all those streets.
They do all the time, they do all the time.
You gotta let them know, because we need to watch that.
Yeah, yeah, they're out of town buses. But once they recognize that bump, then we do it one time.
I think I would maybe have, uh, Sheriff Patrol the streets and actually write up tickets. And I mentioned, I've asked them that very question before. When's the last time you wrote a ticket?
We don't see no tickets under order.
They don't ever write.
I think that would be way more money current than.
If somebody starts writing tickets and.
Okay, I'm, I'm hearing three and a two. Well, we'll, uh, maybe start up our plans, uh, not this month, but maybe, uh, coming down here towards the end of the year, when things quiet down a little bit after I start some projects, we will, uh.
We're ready to retire them now. I know. What, what else would you like to talk about? Whoa. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking Scott, I've seen gesture that we're not talking about it, so let's, let's talk more about it if there's something worse there. If you have.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, it just feels like we're just kinda like, well, we, we, we mentioned it, let's move on. And, and I don't feel like anything's been resolved.
On what? I'm, I'm ready.
He's got his dogs.
I'm ready to do it. So if, uh, you wanna make a, a motion?
No, you cannot.
No, I'm sorry.
You can make a motion.
We can't do that.
What are you talking about?
We have them fiberglass ones that are made of, was it fiberglass? That bolt down through the blacktop, so these blacktops?
I, I really, really, really would advise against that. All that is going to do is undermine our road, because what we have to do, and we have to drill into that.
Well, anyhow.
And now we're gonna cause the expansion there, because they, those specific ones are designed to be taken out in winter. And then you get ice, you get water in there, it expands, now we're cracking the road, it's just a, I, I, I've heard horror stories for a lot of others.
The thought was, if we find a company that made a special customized one, where they run a cable across or rather put anchors on the inside of the blacktop, make it whole. If there's such a thing as that. Look into it, would that be more effective?
I, I.
Then we can go in and a blacktop.
I can look and see if there is such a thing.
On a black street? With some street lane?
So, you clearly know. We've always signs up.
There's specific signage that is required.
You gotta have signage, you gotta have, they gotta be painted, they gotta be marked. There's just more, just laying down asphalt.
That's what it takes.
So it takes. But, ooh, what's chief spitballing here is, I mean, that's what this meeting is for. I'm on it. Or, I'm personally, I am in favor of anything that will work. Now, having the sheriff write more tickets causes them problems, because they'll be writing tickets mainly to the kids at the school, or which they have to maintain some sort of working relationship with these kids. That's gonna be a trouble, that's gonna be a problem for them. Not a problem for us, I don't, I mean, I'd like to see the, the tickets go out, you know, and start, start putting the script to the, to the kids who, who get the.
The law's on the law.
For their, for their stuff. Um, the speed bumps, it seems like at least we're doing something. Now, is it the best option? Probably not. You, you make a valid point, Bill, you do. I had an idea that I had asked Logan about a while back, and that is to somehow gate the entrances to Hundred Thirty Fourth on either end. But either they're narrowing them up, put an island in the middle, that, that prevents big truck traffic. It prevents car traffic, it slows them down, at least at the ends of the road. Maybe it pushes them somewhere else, because they don't feel comfortable making that turn off the highway. I, it, it's a thought.
Our biggest, our, our biggest, uh, our, our biggest, I think it's a, a great idea and I, I did look into it a, a little bit, um, but where it's gonna catch us up is, uh, with the D O T, since on the one end at sixty-nine, um, the D O T will, um, they'll, they'll have to put a turning lane, um, in there, if we, if we put an island in, there'll have to be a turning lane.
Kinda needs to be one, not to interrupt you, but there kinda needs to be one, because if you sit there and watch that intersection for any length of time during the day, or even try to be the person making that, that turn from the highway on Hundred Thirty Fourth, those people would fly right by you on the right side in that intersection, they'll just go around you. And that's dangerous as hell, and they do it all the time.
Same with the Hundred Forty Second there.
Yep.
That's why the D O T is putting a turnabout. Have them there, they've got them going up into Hudson. They're gonna do, they'll probably end up doing two-ten, that road will be forty-five mile an hour in our lifetime, I believe.
So Scott, they're going around it on a two-ten.
Yep, so there's, and then they've got one in the, out there at the apartment building and, uh, the, uh, other little mall area, so there'll be three, from Acne up to Hudson.
Okay, um, let's get to the, to the item at hand. What I'm hearing and what I propose is that there be, uh, item number two, speed humps, two of them between the stop signs, uh, on, uh, Hundred Thirty Fourth and one somewhere between, uh, RP six and the, and the stop sign, and then two of them up on a hundred, on Third and Fourth.
We, we, we can't do six.
It's kind of. No, not, no, 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 I mean on a Hundred Thirty.
Oh, on a Hundred Thirty Fourth, between, sorry, my apologies.
Speed bump and, and, uh, be, uh, the, uh, uh, Third Street and Fourth Street, um, would have, uh, speed bumps, so that'd be a total of three, five, five speed bumps.
Speed bump.
Uh, speed bump.
Is that the?
We want the speed bump number two, item two.
We just need the little one.
Well, if, if you measure, you can see where they were before, you measure that out.
You'll be in people's driveways.
You were over that, you were over that three foot for the speed bump on the previous ones. They're, they're four and a half, five foot wide. The speed bump technically is, is between seven and ten. This, this specific diagram shows ten, ten to twelve.
Well, they need to be ten to twelve or wider.
Right, so.
They're too narrow, you go over fast enough, you never know.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we worked in down here, they had that speed bump.
I, I added a bit of.
Forty, fifty miles an hour, you know, you, they just, duh, duh. Right across and they didn't even phase in one bit.
What is the city's liability if somebody damages the vehicle line?
If Robert's lineage, it would be their.
I, I, when I, when it comes to, to liability, we carry liability insurance, a huge amount, and we're backed up by the state of Iowa. So I don't really work too much.
If I have an lawsuit.
We're still trying.
We're voiding bare responsibility for damage.
We don't, you know, then we could say, you know, you should, we're driving too fast. You know, he just, he does, you know, it's a, it's a situation that he said she should, you just, we can't operate like that, we don't have to.
Well, I was curious, because this led me to this, this point, I, I think I brought this up earlier on. Why do they have to be on, why can't they be a dip?
Those are last though. That's a pothole, that, that.
That's a pothole, that would be exactly my point.
Yeah, well.
If we're not responsible for the damage caused by people who are obviously exceeding the speed limit, then why not make it count?
But probably the dip would hold water and freeze.
Freeze, yeah, that's.
Damage the road.
But, uh, oh, it'd be draining.
Time into the drain.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, but hearing this, uh.
Make them hurt, make them bite.
I think what we'll, we'll do is put together a, a resolution for next month for item number two. As I've said, speed bump, be three of them on Hundred Thirty Fourth Avenue, I believe, and, uh, two of them on Third Street and Fourth Street.
One on each street.
One on each street, one on each street, and, uh, we'll let, uh, Logan get his major to stick out and see where the most effective place to put them.
I, I already know exactly where we would, where we would put them. Um, we just have to include in the resolution the, the cost at, at twenty-five hundred bucks per unit, plus the cost of, um, the signage and to, um, we probably do Iowa plain signing to paint those, um, cause it, it takes quite a lot.
And also.
We have the art coming up to them.
We would like to, uh, pursue, uh, putting in, uh, no right-hand turn and no left-hand turn between certain hours.
That needs to be specified specifically by the council, I, 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 you kind of need the council to give you the specifics of the exactly what needs to be.
We'll put that in a resolution.
Do we have to come up with a fine schedule or something that goes along with that?
Hmm, it's just an improper, it's a standard improper left-hand turn.
I think that's a gym thing, because that's gonna be an ordinance.
Yeah, I remember on three twenty-one charters, they just have improper right-hand turn, improper left-hand turn.
Uh, I worked up a fine schedule for the, uh, truck traffic stuff with Jim, so I, I would agree with Sherry, that should be a gym question.
So in this resolution, do you want to have all of the costs on there or just a resolution?
Well, we'll put it on there for you.
I'm asking if that's what it's gonna be.
Like everybody's costs.
Everybody's costs.
Pipe, it'll be the side, it'll be the bumps, it'll be the signs, it'll be paint, what else were you saying you had to do?
Signage, paint.
Signage, paint.
Um.
What was the other thing?
Cost.
Just the unit price, two big followings, just unit price, paint, and everything like that, so.
Okay.
We're also.
We'll have it all on the next, uh, council meeting.
What did you say, Logan?
Work. Work. I do not know if this applies, but we are legally required to notify the public of a, of a traffic control change. I don't know whether speed bumps, uh, uh, qualify as a traffic control change or not.
Sounds like a better one.
So.
I don't know anything to.
That will be a N U T C.
Well, did you guys do, when you put the stop signs up?
Nope.
Stop signs on.
Hundred Thirty Fourth? Are you thinking about putting ours there?
That's far beyond my, or.
Why not right now?
So. Yeah, that was, that was definitely before my time, so I, I couldn't really.
Now they were just put a.
But yeah, if you do put a, if you do put a stop sign in, you are required to have a solicit that there is a traffic control change ahead.
There wasn't.
About speed signs on all the streets.
Okay, uh, moving on, um, Mike, Willie?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna give it up, we, we're working on this, helping to get, uh, get support for a public system for all, and our, our goal is the regional one, about, we're gonna do this. To, uh, to do that, how is that, the county, the meeting that we had, uh, right here, um, one, one comment was how you gonna pay for this? And the idea is.
For what, what?
Sorry. Oh, the map here showing, we got three thousand acres, two thousand are the L Ws, or developers. And, uh, uh, I met with, uh, Roseanne Rod, Rogers and, uh, and they started pointing out people in her family that own land, and the name's a J P owner. And so I went back and I identified those went through the Sessos Peak. So we're at three thousand acres. We got four times as much that I estimate L card has around them, or my developers are probably. All in a boom if we get two of them, and Roseanne even said that. I don't, I don't know. So, anyway, what we're doing is, here are, these are statements that I put together, maps, and Bob's gonna work on that and Roseanne's gonna help. Uh, Danny Elwell is.
Who's Roseanne?
Roseanne Rogers, she's Roseanne Elwell.
She was up here.
She's one of the family, there's, I think, five siblings. There's Danny, Doyle, and there's Janet, who lives just north of Almond. And, uh, and then Roseanne and Doug. And on that map, they'll have number four above the Harmon property, that Harmon's upside down. And as you remember, they wanted to develop their land, uh, in the past. Muletholzer's done homes, got a realtor. Um, anyway, uh, Harmon, we've been working with, and I was not aware that Elwell was on so much land around here. And I, I'll tell you what, politically, that's a big thing, I'm gonna go to the county. Now, she says Danny, uh, sounds like Bill Kimberly, that all of them should go away, but both of them are developers in Acne, so it's quite political. But, anyway, we're, we're out, and I got these for all the Elwells, Bob's gonna work on this, contact, and Roseanne's gonna help. So if we can get all of them, maybe we end up getting Danny, and that's about two thousand acres. Um, and then we got the signatures from Harmon's already, that's three hundred forty-six acres. I think it's a hundred fifty-seven, or a hundred thirty-four on Muletholzer. Anyway, and then the properties, this eleven through seventeen along Hundred Thirty Fourth Street, those people all want to develop, but they have been contacted by Acne when we're having that annexation battle. And, uh, so I'm gonna try to get them just to confirm that they want to, so they can develop. And then, and then with all this plan and support, putting together a fee schedule kind of on, um, and so, and identifying how much revenue we can generate. But, um, just the tap on, like a access fee, kind of like, the hair paid, money pays the same, then another connection. But those two, for a single family, if I'm using three units an acre, uh, that's a R one seventy, lot, sixty would be more. I'm, I'm starting out with thirteen thousand five hundred, well, you're probably gonna be running fifteen to twenty thousand. Multi-family is a lot higher per acre, maybe not to thirty thousand, twenty-three thousand an acre in fees. So, anyway, if you think about it, three thousand, uh, acres times fifteen to, or just fifteen thousand, you're, uh, you're talking forty-nine dollars in revenues, and that would pair over a period of time. Uh, if you had a ten million dollar, if you worked with the county, let's say yours is ten millions, that would be equivalent to a payoff of one, of the, I think three bowling funds at three percent or something. About three point zero one, with, I, it's, anyway, so that would, uh, for ten million, be a thirteen million dollar payoff for a twenty-year term. And just, I just calculate, just the residential and properties one, two, and, uh, these properties along, the residential part would pay that off. And I would, when you got seored here, I would say this could almost be developed for ten years. I mean, they're ready to go, and ten years, and that's ten thousand people, so my estimates are a little bit low, I think, for Almond.
Or seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, that what you're saying?
Yeah, down here, eleven through seventeen, they have, were contacted by Acne and they, and they'll solve, eleven's thinking about going into Acne. Now, these people are just investors, well, Muletholzer, so, um, but we.
It's hard to change their mind if we.
They, they, all these people change their mind if they sear.
If we beat Acne to it.
Yeah, or not only that, I thought, you know, the State Development Board, and at that meeting, maybe it's for, told, don't go any further north. And they said, we need, this is probably worth six million dollars.
Well, Acne, one side exit for develop.
Up here?
This, this section, Hundred Thirty Fourth.
Yeah, they can't get sear up there though. Don Clark told me he can't get sear up here. Yeah.
The, so the L card, right?
They're at the L Card Road, now that's to the south. But that eleven, these people, if we had that sewer running, and they could hook on, they would be, I even know this Flynn, one of those, they're out west of Bowman, remember that problem?
And what happened, they wouldn't let us hook on Acne before?
Acne doesn't have, everybody says they, why would they build in capacity for thirty-four thousand people, they don't have it. Acne, those sewer lines coming up are only.
They're going east.
Certain capacity.
They're still working on that development over L Card, that sewer system over there, they're still working on that, they got a big field out there ready, promoting. L Card, there's, on the north side of L Card, there's a waste, waste treatment plant they got.
Yeah, that's only two cells, and Bob, he engineered that. I mean, Forrest, Forrest.
But don't they have the land?
Talk about L Cards.
That's, that's L Card's wastewater tram.
Yeah.
Yes, but one time they talked about developing that up there, that's still a go?
They, they are, L Card is developing around north of their city.
For that waste treatment plant?
That's going to go to that, they're pumping up the waste treatment plant, there's no development going around.
Well, no, I, I misspoke about that. They didn't develop that waste treatment plant to make a figure, what happened with that?
They, they, it's designed, it has two cells, and it's designed at a third at some point, and there is ground up there to add a, add additional cells.
But they're building houses around their sewer.
There's houses around there.
The wastewater lagoon that they're building the houses around, that lagoon is now a pond, it's not a wastewater lagoon anymore.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a lagoon, it, it, they're converting into recreational pond.
Right, but they're absolutely don't want anything to do with us, for it.
I, I don't, I don't know.
The, I, 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 my feeling is, and you could speak to this for us, they're a little bit parochial.
They are a little bit.
A bit parochial, they kind of, they want to be, you know, up on their, I was literally told they want to be a residential community, but then they say they want commercial development, so.
They want a gas station, so they're going to gas.
At one time they talked about running a lane right across one hundred forty-second underneath the interstate, to that treatment plant on the south, north side of L Card, that's still that top, that.
That's from the, from the, from the run stop, that from the run stop at one point?
No, 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 from all of them, they talked one time, running clear east, along one hundred forty-second underneath the interstate, because it comes out straight.
That was a plan that Mike made together.
Yeah, well, our plan is to take it along one hundred thirty-fourth Street.
One hundred forty-second.
Or one hundred thirty-fourth, not one hundred forty-second.
One hundred thirty-fourth is north of Bowman, north side of Oliver.
Wait a minute, one hundred.
Thirty-fourth is the south.
Forty-second.
One hundred thirty-fourth is, yeah, your street.
It's Debbie at the end.
They would pump, and then you'd have a gravity sewer. And then they would hook on to that, these people, we'd hook over the, over the interstate or under the interstate. They'd go east and then.
Go back.
Ideally, L Card would have a gravity, and we would monitor what's going in that, and then L Card could hook on to that someday, you know, Alba's, the Alba's got three hundred acres up there, and the Elwell, they got eighty-eight, so they got, they got some people with land, and then, so, so anyway, that's kind of what we're pursuing, and then we just run a sanitary through that area where the existing treatment site is, and take it down to the Scump River Basin, build a regional, it'd start out small, and then expand, as the cities expand, the pipes, the, the force may even be smaller, because, you know, you can't be too big with those, and Forrest can explain that better, but that's our concept, that our concept is. L Card's not on board, they basically said, well, we just, I don't know if they want, they're, they're, I don't know if they really, I don't know.
This is, this is, this program, this, they don't want to throw that away. This, Neil, here is, I mean, this information that we're getting signed on from developers, this is the, the stuff, the plan, everything that whole county has asked us to do, and but they won't do anything until they review this.
Yeah.
And, and see what their feedback is, because they're the ones, they're the only ones that can go to the state revolving fund and borrow that kind of money and make this thing work.
They got to work with us, and maybe Forrest has got so much, with the W R A and stuff, but that's kind of, instead of building one right in the little town here on Four Mile Creek, which I think eventually they'll probably have it relocated, let's try.
That's senseless.
Yeah.
That, any and all would be senseless.
Yeah, because the size, if you look at this, that's how many people, with, are waters, because of the Bondurant, you can explain that, what's the status of that Bondurant, water, that would relieve water for.
Meaning drinking water?
Yeah, the drinking water, Bondurant, they're building a water tower.
They're building a water tower, they're.
And they're going to build their own well, their treatment facility.
Yes, Bondurant's building their own treatment facility northeast of town, to serve their own means, they're not, they're not being part of the Des Moines Water Works.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
And so, the Bondurant Power, then, doesn't have to serve them anymore, and there's an eight-inch line that comes up here, I told that that you could pump up to ten thousand, that would serve about ten thousand population equipment. And then it got expanded, so, but if you look at this land here, I, the amount of land is probably fifteen thousand, that's in gray, population.
Small, small, small. Probably dead by the time this is gone.
Well, I will be too.
Like this cap on fee that you were talking about for the sewer.
You know, George Washington's did, when America became.
Cap on fee that you were talking about for the sewer, that, that would, that would, that would go to whoever puts in the, whole county, I guess.
Well, I, we'd have to figure out who gathers that, we, we can then pay them, I don't know how that mechanism works.
Like, it'd either be used to go to us for us to pay them, or there would be a cap on fee directly.
Yeah, it'd be, well, we have like that use benefit district, like this, or just south of us, in Acne here, that north one's about six thousand bucks an acre, then they have connection fees, but that's a, that's a access fee. And I think the forest you were talking about, Walkie, they're going, basically going citywide at fifty-nine.
Yeah, they have, they have a connection fee that's city, citywide.
Wide one, see, that's, that'd be an idea, that's what we could, right, that'd be the best idea for us.
The, the fees that we would charge would be comparable to cities that already, are in fact.
Yeah, they have those, yeah.
So we wouldn't be double, to force people to go somewhere else, would be on a comparable market value, so we would want that in all, yeah.
You do want to look here, you have twelve schools, maybe, you want to be here, but there's no place to build.
Give you a comparison, I was looking at whole county, to connect to the sewer there, for per single-family resident, a minimum of twelve thousand two hundred fifty. Well, ours would amount to less than five thousand per single-family resident, because you'd pay, I got, I put in here, I got six thousand seven hundred fifty in two thousand thirty, projecting out when this would all happen, and what kind of revenues we'd have. And so that's twenty-two fifty per res, per house, that's twenty-two fifty, so I went to twenty-two fifty for my fee for a single-family too, and using a factor, seventy-five gallons was a hundred, seventy-five gallons, a, a factor of ten, seven hundred fifty, ten dollars a gallon, times three people per household, be twenty-two fifty, that's, comes up to thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. We're acre, we're acre, so then we can.
Figure up these houses over in Hilton, they're twenty-five thousand dollars for a septu-ten miles, that's the going rate. And the other thing that's going to happen is, you know, our sanitaries, or our septic tanks and lateral, that might include, they're the life of those things, you know, and it seems like about the time you want to sell your house, it comes time to get inspected, it's going to fail, and that's going to cost somebody twenty-five thousand dollars to replace, you know, so, I mean sewers, yeah, it, it's expensive, but you know what, I'd rather have a sewer than have to worry about a septic tank and lateral system that would work, I mean. We spend money for a sewer system, X mile, twenty thousand dollars a lot, right? Let's say that, twenty-five grand a lot. Plus the monthly fees after that, because they're losing monthly fee for sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, over a period of time, what's that add up to?
Yeah, it'll depend, I had put together, it was based on a certain amount of money, I did this quite a while ago, trying to generate at what point would the local, the user fee start paying the debt, because you get to a point, I think that's, L Card is just a user fee, isn't it, that, your, your water bill is paying for their sewers, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, see, this, this idea, and I think they're going to look into that there too. And this idea would be, you got, just like Acne and other places, you come in and pay them an assessment upfront, the access, and like I said, six thousand, six thousand CJ at Walkie and stuff, or per acre base, then he'll put a, have a connection fee that you go pay, and that'll be dependent upon your wastewater production estimates.
It'd be a sewer bill for operation.
Actually, why don't I hand this out, this, Forrest, you can, I worked on some of this with Vince.
This is, you don't want to make copies. Oh, you've got copies, you're handing out.
Yeah, right here, there. Anyway, Vince has got a, I've changed that some, so. I'm here looking at L Card, and then, apply that here too, this is, I don't know that, you know, when they do design for commercials, five thousand gallons per day per acre, wouldn't you farm that? That'd be the fee system.
I don't know if something's changed.
Yeah, this is definitely something to change, but just the idea, numbers thrown up, so we can get an idea of what we can generate the revenue.
This will try to help sell it.
Yeah, help, there's one I did here, when I used to eat, like, there's a third, a third office, he had, well, that, but actually, got to a point where these users were paying the debt, well, then the new revenues come in, it'll help pay for expansion. But that way I have one copy, like this thing right here, but this is for each point five minutes, just sixty-five hundred and, I've, I've sold this to you, but my population is going to have to be a lot, we're going to, we'll change it, but I was at, in five years, I was up to five hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred, in, in five years, the user fees, basically, twenty-five thousand, that would pay off the debt, like, I had it in five years, and with this thing, let's say at a point, your user fees will be, can pay off the near cumulative funds, because you're going to have to expand that wastewater treatment plan. So, that's kind of the idea.
That's what Mike and I have been working on.
And Forrest, I could, I could send the user up that user app right there for Vince, and you guys get that L Card, so they can start generating some.
It's a, it gets very complicated sometimes, but basically, we got to do the homework first, before we ever go back to the county and, and screw up our, our numbers, and whole county, you know, we're the last fashion of economic development in whole county, everything west, south, and east is almost.
Oh, great.
And we're the, we're kind of the last, last Mohicans here, and there's a, you know, as well, I agree, that there's a lot of interest in economic development out here, and it, you just don't issue any building permits, I mean, there's no place to go to do anything, and one thing is the interest rate's going to come down, and then all of a sudden, things are going to start popping.
You look at that area on West here, what the hell?
Yeah, it's, it's huge, you know, and so, it's an investment.
Harmon, is, is Elwell's out there?
Okay, any other questions for Mike, guys?
Nope.
Uh, thank you, Mike, thank you.
Anyway, the commercial is really hard, you know what they're going to put in, you know, so, I thought this was made up for ten thousand, because I, I looked at an office building, two hundred and ten thousand, ten thousand square per acre, and two hundred fifty per person, now, this day and age, with computers and AI and everything, you know, it's probably, employment's going to be less, but I would have go up that, forty, and so I figured that would produce about twelve thousand per acre, office park, now you get a warehousing, it's going to be a lot less, but they're not using the capacity of, that's why we called that a connection capacity impact, connection fee.
And that's why we're going to work on our comp plan, you know, we kind of got the Ego Plan out, where we want things.
If you look at that, I, I use seventy-five gallons, and maybe the apartments, you could get down to sixty, and the townhomes, I just use seventy-five, and that's different household sites, but if you look at sewers, they got three and three, and then two point five, I don't know, I think that's a little high, so, but this won't be refined, it'll be years from now, we have to, by the time we got the whole thing for people to connect, that's one, but this is our idea to estimate revenue.
Can I bring in here a minute? Forgive me on this, I'm going to have to backpedal just a little bit, I feel like I am not even remotely up to speed on what's going on here, and I'm getting a lot of the internal works of the clock, but nobody's telling me what time it is.
Okay.
I want to know, what is the timeline we're working on here, what, what's the overall vision from today to when something like this might actually happen, what does the council's role in this look like, or, I don't know where I stand on this, I have no clue.
Well, first of all, I, first of all, I think we understand that we're going to need a public sewer system, wouldn't you agree? I mean, wouldn't you agree that we're going to need one here? You're in the path of growth, so, we did that sewer study, and we had a proposed one on Ellie's property, down there, Ellie's property.
No, I.
Yeah, and then, the alternative.
Heard this thing four or five times.
The alternative.
Sure, what you're asking, what you're asking is hopefully we have enough information signed and everything.
Yeah.
Next year, first part of next year, we'll probably be approaching whole county.
Yeah, well.
With a, maybe a preliminary plan, back report, back report, I'd say that planning process would be next year.
Yeah, another thing.
What is our role in that?
Uh, the council's role in it is, is to approve.
Politic.
The plan, as we have it, approve it, so that you guys have it all in front of you, and approve it, or whoever the council's going to be, and approve it, so that we can go, so we have the backing of the council to go with Polk County, and, and then, you know, Polk County's going to take their time to study in it, if they think it's a good investment in the future of Polk County, and, and northern Polk County, then, then they will come back and, with maybe a counter-proposal, or a better, some, some, you know, tweaking or whatever, and, and then, hopefully, they will, they sit, they have people that sit on the board, the W R A board, and they'll be working with their people, and just hopefully, they can get a pretty good group of, working group of people, engineers and probably Eastern Kim, to tie this thing together, because it's a good piece of economic development that they are looking for, and they've done it before, they did that, they did the U six Avenue State or Intercept for Sewer, ten million dollars from Polk County, ten million from Polk City, and ten million from Acne, and they ran a sewer line, enclosed Polk City Sewer Plant, and ran a sewer line down. And they ran a sewer line and closed Pope City Sewer Plant and ran a sewer line down to Sixth Avenue and Seder Interceptor Creek. And that was a piece of economic development that helped Ankeny, Pope City, and whole county. Because whole county is running that sewer line up there. Actually, I agree that, that thirty inch sewer up Sixth Avenue just never was used very much. But now if a lot of Pope City get out of the business, and we really don't wanna be in the business. What we wanna do is have this whole plan together and hopefully the WRA will see our plan, see the importance of our plan. And help us develop a sanitary sewage treatment facility on the Scott River Box.
Yeah, and part of this, um, one of the, for studying is where to locate that thing if we can sell the idea. Now you gotta understand, east that area, east of Ankeny, it's south of Elkhart. And then beyond the north edge of, it's probably three floors long as wide, is anticipated, anticipated to be part of Ankeny. Well, that's not planned to be serviced by sewer yet. And in a meeting I had with their Jets, and, and I think, did you have a meeting, they were talking about going east? But they don't have sewer capacity or the ability to serve that far eastern area that someday could be part of Ankeny. So we could, if you identify that drainage basin including Almond and Elkhart, you know, if, if they want, you know, to be able, well, if we run a sewer there, they'll probably hook home aid or the D and R. But anyway, to build that treatment facility down there, it'd start out small and expand. Then have to buy enough land and probably use visual and odor mitigation. It's the way to do it this day and age usually have it. Uh, so the people in the hills, there's some homes up in the blocks there, you didn't see it, but there's a lot of land down there that's not in the flood plain. It's just, it's not in the flood, hazard areas, just.
Would you answer, would it help if we had some kind of a document that showed some milestones with some dates on it? Of hey, by this time, we're gonna have this, by this time, we have this, by this time.
We're taking.
I, I, I agree with that and I.
You know what, I'd like to put it right on that bulletin board and who's gonna develop it? Put it right up there on that bulletin board and that this is our goal. So anybody that comes here, we'll see you on a goal.
See, this is what, what we're doing now, and I'm, I'm, it's, people move pretty slow.
But we have no idea as a council how long that should.
Oh, just do it.
So that's, that's what we're asking them, because hey, how long is this gonna take or how long is this gonna?
Well, right now, we're trying to get signatures and that's a, a slow go.
And how long will that take?
I'm coming after.
We're gonna work on it, we're gonna get these people, yeah, so we almost most of it, we got Arman, we got.
Already have.
And then Barnes, they got forty acres and I sent a copy to the realtor and I don't know where that went, so anyway.
Arman and Mule, Mule and Dollar have already signed on to this.
Yeah.
And now we go to Roseanne Rogers.
It's a piece of paper that says, if you were to sell your land to a developer, you would allow sewer.
Well, it's, this is what it says. Here's uh, Roseanne. Says, um, representation of Rogers Sixty Incorporated, owner of approximately two hundred and nine acres of land in and near to the city of Almond in sections eleven fifteen and twenty. Lincoln Township, Oak Town, Iowa, within the city of Almond's Conference of Planning Area. It illustrated on the following maps. We wish to support the city of Almond's effort to establish a public sanitary sewer system to serve the city as well as express interest in developing or selling our land for development. The public sanitary sewer service becomes available to the property. There's a normal doubt.
Each, every, each and every property.
Yeah, Elwell's got a lot of them.
Do they understand there's a cost? Are they willing to pay money for that sewer system as part of that?
They understand that they're developers and uh, but there's not an amount established yet, so. What happened to the school board one time? We had that meeting, they're gonna put a, start a sewer system up here by the school so a school can eventually hook onto it. And it's gonna run across a hundred and forty second, so they can develop over here and right across the street from here. Cause we talked about putting that street through here, develop houses. All that's gone away now. And we lost the funding from the school system. We could've got money from there, but we lost that. No, I, I would say they're gonna have to, I had a, my one concept here had eight, three million for the projects. I don't know.
If they put, they, they put their money into rebuilding their system.
Re system, right.
And if there wasn't, there wasn't the capacity in there.
There wasn't the capacity, you guys.
You insert what, fifty to a hundred houses and you got three thousand acres? But that right over there, cause they all have that land on the other side of a hundred and forty second, that was a selling point right there. And then if the school needed to tie into it, they could've.
That's how I.
No, I, I taught too. It was Rogers about doing a retirement community in there because they got all that flood plain cut fill and got trails going through there. And uh, being worth a lot more than the single family residential we talked about, so, or doing some more, something that's.
The only other, the only other thing, guys, is uh, do you have any other questions of Mike? Uh, Scotty, Scott, do you have any other questions?
My thinking is we should be provided a schedule of what we think, and, and I, an estimate of the timelines. We think it's going to take.
I'll do that.
That way, that way it just kinda gives us a ballpark.
Yeah.
Everybody understands that this stuff takes time. But let's, let's, let's start to put some milestones on paper or whiteboard, I don't care where it is.
I'll write out a schedule.
Somewhere we can see it, somewhere we can track it, hey, you said you were gonna do this. Great, you got them awesome, thanks. Or hey, why, why does it take this long? Just, just accountability of, just trying to keep things moving forward. I think that would help.
Well, to, to see what the next step would be.
Right, it helps bring the vision in clearer.
Yeah, all right.
And the big construction project, we gotta have milestones, we gotta have goals.
Uh, apparently our great football team is going to.
You skipped on.
We're getting, oh, your audit, oh, yeah.
Oh, my audit, the city's audit.
The city's audit by the few uh.
This came in right last week. It's a public document, you don't ever have to vote on it or anything. I just wanted to walk you with you page nine and ten, it's for the findings. Okay, letter A, this is your basic duties. For a small city, every small city gets taken on this, which is done of employees to double check.
So we have two, there's a double check.
Yeah, well, and actually, since we have Nick, that kinda counts, yes. So, the bank reconciliation, as you can see, the recommendation that somebody needs to sign off on the, just put the bank's image every month. And since Bob already has some duties, he does, I see the council person to step up to go over bank regulations with me and sign off on it every month. Letter C is um, checks basically that weren't cashed. When it started out, there were twenty that I was not aware, going back to um, nineteen ninety-three. And I'm able to find all but two. I don't know, one of them was for thirty-nine ninety-nine, it was to Stacy Larson in twenty thirteen. Since it's under fifty bucks and I can't find any kind of receipt for it, that one just kinda disappears. Other one was Sydney who did our um, website. And it was in twenty eighteen for two, a hundred and twenty-five, so that one's been sent off to the Great Iowa Treasure Hunt for her to find. Uh, letter D is a Nick item. And basically we needed to do a resolution to transfer the money into the correct pots. And, and like, it says that um, Public Works, General Government Debt Services were, went over there. What we put in that bucket, we had to do a change there.
So it's a yearly thing?
Yes. Disbursement's letter E, um, twenty-four dollars was paid in tax, accidentally, the city's tax free. In finding those, one was for Lowe's and one was for Hepsa Communications, so those will be watched more closely.
How do you guys do that when you go to Lowe's or those kind of places? Do you carry a card that, that actually?
Well, I tried to make Lowe's go to places where we have charge accounts. Lowe's was a kind of a screw up where we walked in and bought something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do you, you know this?
We've, we've sent many.
I have a page, I have a piece of paper that has our tax ID number on it. And he has a copy in the truck and there's money in my drawer, so yeah.
I just.
Yeah, good question. Letter F is kind of a pain. My Water Works, so one of the biggest places that cities can dazzle money is by stealing water. And mayor doesn't charge himself for water.
Really?
So they would like us to show um, the leak one accounts, how much money to my Water Works collected. To my Water Works is kinda fighting with me on that. Um, the month I got it, there were only three people who did pay their water, not it was none of us. So we're not stealing water, but I just don't work with my Water Works on that one.
You wouldn't wanna call it stealing, it would just be in non-payment. That's.
Fix the glue.
Yeah, yeah. She is another.
You can't say that on a, I don't want to.
She is another one that Nick and I need to work on more. Um, they would like a resolution, when we do the transfers. Number H.
Just from my recollection, transfer, when we, what, what is that? Give me an example of one time, of any time that we transferred from one fund to the other, what were, what were the processes to do that?
I got one, go ahead.
Go, okay.
Uh, when we, when we redid Forest Street, they were actually taking off this new project. We had to transfer because we didn't have enough and one, but this was a couple of years ago. Couple of years ago.
Another H.
So this one's your fault?
No, 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 no. We don't point fingers around here.
Letter H is wrote down best by this pink sheet that I asked Nick to explain to me what journal entries were. And I get what he's saying, when I pay the bills, it all comes out of the general fund, but I tell him what bucket to take it out of. So then he does a journal entry with. Where the funds went from, like real use and play benefits proprietary fund. So we just need to show when he moves them from the general fund to the correct fund, that is, we done the resolution also. All in all, it was a good audit, there was no problems, really made it up the city.
Nothing, no spankings forthcoming, no.
No, there's no money missing. No, it was, it was under seven dollars that they couldn't find, so I feel happy.
Well, you know, it's, it's really important, you've seen a lot of the embellishments and all those things that have happened throughout the state of Iowa. Uh, city courts, uh, miss filing deadlines and all these kinds of things. And I, I feel real lucky that we have Sherry and that Nick, uh, between the two of them, they brought the tight ship. And uh, so I'm pretty thankful for that. Okay, um, any other questions? Any questions?
This is available on the state's website too, so. President's more copy, they came in. You know, I'm trying to miss trick or treat, Mr. Coy, I mean, it could be a change in the football game, it could be Friday, they'll know this week. Other it's gonna be on October thirty-first, so what do you guys wanna do with Halloween?
Same night every year, or thirty-two years.
I'm still looking at that too.
If we have a playoff game on Friday night here, um, and all the traffic and the kiddos are out doing trick or treat. And those kids on Saturday.
Those would definitely overlap.
I would for the safety of the children.
Bring the kids.
I have two thoughts, either Saturday or, Saturday, but I don't know what time's Saturday, or Friday still from five till six only. It's still daylight out.
Traditional beggar night.
Cause we never done it that night, right Gary?
No, we've always had it on beggars night.
Right first.
Yeah, we have halos.
At a football game and a lot of people in town, it's gonna be, I think a little back.
You guys tell me what you want to hear.
Yeah, I have to go ahead. Not like Saturday, Thursday night is not a, well, like a Thursday, Friday would, or Saturday would be a, a good time. And you guys okay with Saturday?
I'm, I'm good with Saturday.
Same hours?
Same hours. Don't wanna confuse everybody.
Scott, you okay with it?
I'm okay with it. The only, my only comments that I was even going to offer up were two for one. Just from personal experience with my family, uh, my parents have lived in West Des Moines pretty much their whole life. And uh, my dear grandson likes to go here. And they like us from there and having the two different nights always worked out great. That's neither here nor there, I don't care, it's not about me, it's not about my son. Uh, but what I have heard from some of the residents is that the only thing that made it worthwhile to go buy candy these days was that we were on a different night than the other places. And so kids would come from out of the area to come here, could get candy.
But we didn't change.
Right, no, I agree.
They did.
You're, you're, you're right. You're a hundred percent right.
But I know as a kid, we did daycare and then we came up here and took grandma's, so I know what you're saying.
No case, Carol. Yeah, I tell you. Okay, uh, nothing else? Have any?
More motion, I'm sorry. Before we, I would only ask the mayor to quit parking on the street in the name of safety. It is not safe to just park on, that's assuming you're gonna slow things down. I'm not arguing, I just, my ask of the mayor.
Fine.
And we need to put that on the website of changing if the football game becomes a deal. Put it out now so people can get a mindset.
So I think we have to either change it right now or not at all.
Or Saturday morning.
Cause we can't leave it there on a, on a maybe, cause we're, we're tending.
When, when are we gonna find out?
It's Saturday morning though now.
Well, this Saturday.
That's pretty short notice to change.
Yeah, that's a week.
That's a week.
Right, that's a week, that's it. It's gonna have to be notified by everybody.
Well, wait till we find out and put it on the internet as soon as you can, so that.
What you can do.
Well, you should just go ahead and change it right now and start sending out notices or, you know, start notifying.
But what if there is a game, then they ask why to change it?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll work with the client and find out for sure.
I, I have been speaking with Klein.
Yeah, we'll work there. Okay, that's it, if there's nothing else, thank you everyone.